Dr. Benitez, can you hear? Yes, thank you. And will you speak, please, so I can see if we can hear you?
Yes, I can hear you very well.
Perfect, likewise, thank you. Good evening. I will call this meeting to order, the Board of Education Regular Meeting, November 24th, 2025, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll prepare for public comment. Welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. Regular meetings are a time for the Board to conduct its business. As a Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. The Board may hear public participation for up to sixty minutes. Public participation shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. One speaker cannot yield their time to another speaker. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the administration for review. As adults, we serve as positive role models for our students. Please be respectful of people. We ask speakers not to make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. Dr. White, are we ready for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our first speaker is Joseph Sakolovic.
Good evening, distinguished Board members, Mayor Elicker. My name is Joseph Sakolovic. I live at 334 Burnford Avenue, Bridgeport, Connecticut. I am currently a Board member on the Bridgeport Board of Education, but I am here speaking on my behalf with the knowledge of what you guys are going through, it's the same exact as Bridgeport is going through. You've guys had to have massive cuts in the last year. Public coming at you, not understanding that it's not us that actually are forcing the cuts, we are obligated by law to balance our budget. And the reason we have to make all these cuts is because the state is not doing its part in funding our schools. Next year, Bridgeport itself is facing a $37 million increase need, and as you may know, I'm sure you all know, there's a zero percent increase in next year's ECS, or Education Cost Share Formula. The ECS has remained flat, front flat, for the base ratio amount. The base aid has remained the same at $11,575,000. Since 2013, the cost, that's the cost, the average cost of funding one regular run-of-the-mill student with no special needs, hasn't been changed since 2013. Costs rose everywhere else in the world in 2013. If we, if we as citizens don't get a raise at our job for thirteen years, and our rent goes up and everything else goes up, we can't pay our bills and we get evicted. That's what's happening to the education system. We are cutting, cutting, cutting to meet the lack of inflationary adjustments to the ECS. So what I'm calling for on all our, all our districts, Alliance districts, every district alike, is to ask for a $2,000 increase to the base amount of funding. Now, a lot of people may think this is very expensive. The city, the state of Connecticut is sitting on a $2 billion surplus from last year and four-plus billion dollars in excess reserves in a rainy day fund. And we also, what else are we sitting on? We're sitting on potential revenue of $1.8 billion that Massachusetts got by instituting a wealth tax. So instituted that $2,000 per pupil, that would give the city of New Haven about $38 million extra the next year. And I'm sure it's probably just enough to maintain your services and maybe add a few more services. So we Alliance districts, priority districts, we all need to get on the same page and we need to start advocating like never before. Those of you who don't belong to any community groups, the NAACP, get yourselves involved with those groups. Get them the information that they need to advocate. Let them know the urgency of the matter because we need to advocate like never before. It's been done twice before. Jody Rell increased the ECS, the base ratio amount by $4,000. The next one was raised by $1,698, that was by Governor Rowland. What they, what they didn't have that we have the blessing of now, they did not have a rainy day fund, they did not have a $2 billion surplus. What we lack now is not money, the will to make changes. So we need to bring pressure on the governor like never before. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Willie Medina.
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Willie Medina. I'm a proud member of Faith As For Education, also NAACP. I'm also, just for information, I'm also a Board member from the Bridgeport Public School System. I'm in my first year, my first term of four years, so I'm here advocating because I would like to build bridges. So I'm here to say to you guys, we're here lining up with you, not against you. We're tired about what the state is doing to bring in our towns and our districts against each other. I appreciate your advocacy as a superintendent, as a mayor, in calling out what we're doing. We've done it, we've been standing in the front lines, asking, pushing, and fighting, and we have a responsibility and we have accountability to our students and to our parents. I'm a father of three, husband of one, a minister of the Church of Calvary Baptist Church, who was our private representative, founding pastor Reverend Robert Rodriguez, the late, and now Senior Pastor Irene Rodriguez. So I'm serving a community that I'm there. I'm a Bridgeport native, born and raised, and we have responsibility to our, to build structure also, aligning our goals to our funds. And they've made it harder and harder every single year, as our colleague just mentioned. And I believe the word that I've been using is that they're holding $6 billion hostage, and we need to go after that. It's our money, it belongs to us, we need to continue to fight, but we need to do it together. I want to secure the health, healthy buildings, healthy education system, healthy community. The only way we can do that is to tell them what we need and ask them, how can we do it if we don't have the funding? We definitely have something that is right in front of us, is that our grasp, and that is the victory. It's been promised to us, as long as we continue to advocate and stand with each other instead of against each other, I know we can make the effective change that we need. But again, we need to build bridges, so we're here just holding each other accountable ourselves, that we're going to continue to go out to other districts and sharing our voices and sharing our, our voices, saying that we want to stand together. And we're called, we just came from a convention, and we called in the meeting for all the superintendents and all the chairs of, of the Board of Education to go out there together to the state and to go as a group, as a family of Connecticut, and go forward the thing. So I'll extend that invitation and we'll be in contact as soon as possible when it comes to that. Thank you, and I know you guys have a long agenda, and I'll leave you with that. God bless you.
That concludes all hands and all signed up.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Joiner.
Now, I have a point of personal privilege.
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, let me thank my brothers from Bridgeport for what they're doing. Actually, I thought that we only had one of a kind in Matt, in terms of his understanding of school finance and his moral commitment to fairness, but it looks like we have two now, one from Bridgeport, one from New Haven, and hopefully we'll get more. I am asking for this opportunity to issue a public statement in support of Board reappointments. As you know, two of our Board members, Dr. Benitez and Dr. Yarborough, were reappointed recently, and I was reelected. This is, as, on a person-by-person basis, the best board I've ever served on, for a number of reasons. We don't have anybody on this board that's trying to hook people up. We don't have anybody on this board that's, that's creating issues within the Board and in the community. And we don't have anybody on this board that was sick, a preacher on the Board to discredit Board members and staff. Those of you who live in this city know exactly what I'm talking about. We do not strengthen public education by punishing excellence, devotion, or ordinary human caregiving. We strengthen it by recognizing steady service, proven competence, and the integrity of people who show up, again and again, for children who depend on us. Dr. Benitez and Dr. Yarborough are precisely the kind of citizens a serious school system should want at the table. Dr. Benitez is a veteran educator and administrator with more than four decades of experience across teaching, counseling, and high-level public leadership. She is bilingual and holds a PhD in educational leadership. That is not a resume line, those are lifetime credentials earned in the hard work of classrooms, families, and systems. Dr. Yarborough is a young geneticist who rose from a difficult urban childhood to high academic achievement and professional distinction. His life embodies resilience and the very promise public education claims to defend, that talent can rise and that civic responsibility can follow. Some of the criticisms raised against them do not survive ethical or practical scrutiny. Number one, attendance and reliability. Over four years, both members missed only one meeting. That record demonstrates reliability, not neglect. In any professional standard, education, medicine, law, public administration, missing one meeting in a year is evidence of commitment. Our children are better served by consistent, prepared members who participate fully even when life is demanding, than by members who attend every meeting but contribute little to the moral and intellectual labor of governance. Dr. J's, Dr. B's, role participation. Governance is not theater, it is work. The purpose of a Board meeting is not to display bodies and seats, but to deliberate vote and lead responsibly. Dr. Benitez has attended some meetings remotely because she was caring for a sick mother, out of town, and supporting grandchildren. That is not character flaw, it is a mark of humanity. A community that truly values families cannot condemn a public servant for honoring her own family. Her choice reflects the values we demand from schools every day. Responsibility, compassion, and faithfulness to those who need you. Excuse me. Dr. Yarborough has a child in private school. This objection mistakes personal circumstances for public disqualification. A Board member does this to serve the public system with honesty, fairness, and skill. Dr. Yarborough has done that. One child's schooling choice shaped by family needs, timing, or individual fit does not erase a member's competence or civic devotion. If we take this argument seriously, we would disqualify any parent who has ever sought a specialized placement, a magnet seat, a therapeutic program, or a temporary alternative during hardship. That would shrink our Board to a narrow and unjust test of purity, not a broad search for wisdom and service. In fact, if you, if you think that someone is disqualified because they have a child in private school, what do you think about a person who's of not the majority ethnic group in their ward, and they're elected to serve that group? By that criteria, if you're serving a predominantly Hispanic ward in Fairhaven, you should be Hispanic. Think about that. The core ethical test, are we judging real outcomes or policing appearances? Children cannot afford a board culture that uses symbolic litmus tests to drive away proven people. The stakes are too high. Our district needs members who understand teaching, child development, trauma, equity, budgets, and the long arc of school improvement. Dr. Benitez brings decades of system knowledge and bilingual community credibility. Dr. Yarborough brings rigorous scientific training, a youth perspective, and lived experience of what it means to climb out of social neglect into possibility. Together, they widen, not narrow, our capacity to govern all children. Public service is not the absence of personal life, it is a discipline of showing up for the common good, for our care and the burdens of ordinary humanity. Dr. Benitez and Dr. Yarborough have shown up. They have served steadily. They have missed virtually nothing. And they have done so while living the very values we claim to teach, perseverance, responsibility, and care. Reappointing them was not merely permissible, it was right, and it was wise for the people who did it. And above all, for the children who don't get another childhood while adults perform politics instead of stewardship. My granddaughter is in the audience. There are children in the audience that depend on us every day for right decisions. And we couldn't have appointed, reappointed Mayor Elicker to better people, better people anyplace on the planet. And I commend you for your appointment, and I commend the two of you for your service. Thank you. And excuse my tears, I'm a child of a civil rights movement, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joiner. Thank you for your preparation, for your words, for sharing that. And thank you for reflecting back to myself, Dr. Benitez. Maybe what we push through and don't always take the time to recognize ourselves, but appreciate you naming. Thank you. We'll continue with our agenda with a couple of action items, the first being the approval of the minutes on November 10th, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, that's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. Benitez.
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joiner?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Our students are not here, I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. Next, our personnel report, Dr. Negron.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. Before I ask for the approval of tonight's personal report, I do want to highlight that Carl Carangelo, or Chief Auditor, will be retiring on January 30th, 2026. Please know that we are grateful for his service. He has served for a total of 29 years in this capacity. And with that, I ask for approval of the personal report.
So move.
Seconded.
Thank you, that's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. Benitez.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I had raised my hand.
Oh, raised hand, yes, thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Yes, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Carangelo. Having worked with him for many years and having the support that he gave, principals and many, many of us who work with budgets and, and make sure that we always did the right thing and that we spent our budgets the way we had suggested and making sure that what we did will always keep us on the right track, let's say it like that. But I will miss his kind words and his warmed spirit, so I hope he has a wonderful retirement and hoping that he lives a long life to enjoy with his family.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Okay, we'll move to a vote. Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joiner?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. Finance and operations, Mr. Wilcox?
All right, thank you. Before I begin, does anybody need anything separately this evening? Hearing and seeing none, I'll go ahead and make the main motion. I move that we approve these four abstracts, this one agreement, the two amendments, the three purchase orders, and the one change order as outlined on our agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joiner?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. Now, students are not here for their report. Superintendent's report, Dr. Negron.
Thank you again. Before I invite members of the Office of Students' Support Services to join me for the presentation, by the way, Executive Director Tiffany Jackson will be joining us, but she's currently at the Board of Alders. I did want to take this opportunity to make sure that our parents, our families, or stakeholders are aware of the communication that I shared with them on Friday via email and also via the AppTog application, inviting them to participate in our budget development this year. You again should have received that email. In it, you are able to go through thought exchange. You will see one question being posed where I am asking and inviting you to share your perspective. If for some reason you did not receive the email or the AppTog message, I invite you to go to our website, nhs.net, and on the landing page, you will see a message that reads, "Please share your perspective on the budget." You will see a space that reads, "Click on Learn More." If you click on that Learn More, it's going to take you directly into our thought exchange survey. So again, we want to make this a very collaborative, transparent process. We need to hear from you. This survey opened up on Friday morning. I want to thank already the 376 people that have already responded. We already have, so, 4:30 this afternoon, a total of 289 thoughts that have been shared. So again, go to our website, nhs.net, and share your perspective as we begin to develop the budget for fiscal year '27. And with that, I am going to invite Dr. White to put up our presentation tonight. We want to talk to you about our priority around culture and climate. Monica Abbott is going to be joining me, as well as maybe, maybe Bill Scott also will be joining, and I know that at some point, we're going to be inviting Principal Haka to share her perspective from Truman School.
Good evening, Dr. Negron, Mayor Elicker, Board of Education. Thank you for having us here. And as Dr. Negron said, I will be joined by instructional coach Bill Scott, Principal Dr. Haka from Truman School, and a student, Lele, thank you, Izari, who will be also sharing some thoughts this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about the culture and climate for the district. And our work is always rooted in the pathway to excellence, and the priority area today we're talking about is culture and climate. Our theory of action and what we're here to talk about tonight really is about three areas, how we work together as a district to create structures and systems, build capacity for the adults in the buildings, and to improve engagement within our students. We started with our Pathway to Excellence last year, and we were able to move some of the work in those areas, specifically around student engagement and empowerment, fostering strong communication through the different norms and things that we utilize within our building meeting time, and approving student attendance. We've had other opportunities to speak about student attendance. Today, we're going to focus more specifically on the culture and climate strategies that promote building positive, inclusive classrooms and, as well as buildings. For year two, we are doing that through specifically, we're looking to create a walkthrough tool that we will utilize to take a snapshot of what's happening in buildings. We additionally are working to have professional development around all the strategies that Bill will be speaking out to you today about, and lastly, increasing our student voice, and Lele will share about that. And Dr. Haka will share about the experience from a school-wide perspective. I'm going to turn it over to Bill, who will share about data and the strategies we use.
Get that lovely discussion centered around data, so excited. So I guess I would just open by saying that we utilize data and we want to center around data for a variety of different purposes. The slide that you probably can't see that's up on the screen currently, as I strain my eyes, just points out some of the data that we're utilizing to support students. And we're using that in a variety of different means. Number one, we do want to ensure that we're utilizing data to center student need. Number two, we want to ensure that we are, oh, I can see, fine, it's all good. Number two, we want to ensure that we have a clear sense of staff need so that we can provide appropriate training and professional development when needed. And I think it's also very important to acknowledge the complex nature of this work and reference the fact that many different groups and individuals are doing it. So we want to utilize data to ensure that we're not duplicating efforts and that we're honoring the work that is being done. Generally, what we're seeking to do is to maximize resources as we center student need. So one of the data collection tools So one of the data collection tools that we utilize is the Tared Fidelity Index. This is a research-validated instrument that provides us with observational data on how schools are developing their school culture and climate. Among other things, this helps us to take a look at school-wide expectations, ensuring that we have acronyms and expectations posted throughout the building, ensuring that we have common language. Another thing that this supports us in doing is really taking a look at teaming, ensuring that we have equal representation. Do we have folks that have decision-making power? Do we have somebody with behavioral expertise? Do we have grade-level representation? Another thing that we utilize this tool for is just to... What we've noticed is we have a lot of schools that have a clear sense of the interventions that they're employing, but not always clear-cut entrance and exit criteria. So this is a place where we can support them where and when needed. On this next slide, you can also see a snapshot. So we are able to take a look at behavioral data. So the powerful thing about this data is that you can see it has the percentage of behavioral incidents that are coming from the classroom, from the hallway, from outside. Really, this becomes a powerful conversation tool as we're able to take a look at the students that are involved in incidents, the staff that's involved in the incidents, and kind of where those incidents are occurring. And we can layer on additional supports. Another nice feature about this data is that we can disaggregate it by staff response. And for a district that really centers restorative practices, we want to make sure that we're not being overly exclusionary or punitive in our responses to student behavior. So this supports that. Lastly, we have the ability to take a look at individual supports and progress. So up on the screen here, you can see an example of check-in, check-out, which really takes a look at how students are following behavioral expectations across various settings. We also have the ability to drill down on that a little bit further and really take a look at some of the interventions that we're employing. So we can see if a strategy like a sensory break or a movement break is effective in keeping a student in a seat or in a classroom. Last data slide, I promise, as I go back one. One other thing that I want to recognize is the Welcoming Schools Initiative. This provides us with data regarding how our families see our buildings as they step foot through the door, helps to take a look at any perceptions they might have regarding messaging that's coming home, really take a look at student and staff interactions within the building. And really, what we're seeking to see here is that when families enter our buildings, do they really feel like family when they're there? What better way to follow up data than with the obligatory triangle slide here? But I do want to emphasize New Haven's efforts here to really integrate the two sides of the triangle, those being academic and then more social in nature. Far too often in education, I feel like we end up with the discussion regarding the chicken and the egg with behavior and academics. But really, it's the chicken and the egg. There's not one without the other. And the more that we can do simultaneously to support students academically and socially, the better off we're going to be. As we take a look at some of the universal supports that we employ to support students, the first one that I will elevate are just engagement strategies. These come from Castle's three signature practices. And I think the reality is that there are times during the school day where we want to embrace student energy and other times when we really want to calm that down. What this looks like is really just employing SEL with intentionality. So it might be the playing of a guided meditation as we come back from gym or recess. It might be playing soothing songs or a soundscape as students are working independently. On the opposite side of the coin, there's times when we really want to elevate and lift up that student energy. So that might be a this-or-that activity where students are going to the front of the classroom or the back of the classroom to see if they like Takis or Doritos. Me, I'm Cool Ranch Doritos all the way. We've even seen teachers that are able to channel the dreaded energy from this six-seven phenomenon. So as a parent of a six, four, and three-year-old, I definitely need some additional strategies to kind of quell that in the household. Second universal support that I'll draw out here is relationship building. And if we prescribe to Dr. Comer's belief that no significant learning can occur without relationship, obviously, this is hugely important work. Teachers do this in myriad ways, but one of them is employing restorative practices. I think far too often, we take a look at restorative practices and we really hyper-focus on repairing harm, facilitating formal conferences. But at least 50% of this work is preventative in nature. And this can start on day one with getting to know your community-building circles. Another support that we utilize here for relationship building is our explicit Social Skills Curriculum Second Step, which is amazing. But it also has myriad resources for class challenges, class meetings, service learning opportunities. And really, what this provides is an opportunity for students and teachers to see each other in another light. What we believe is that the more that we can do to foster these things universally, ultimately, the fewer students we end up seeing targeted and intensive supports. That being said, we do end up with kids that are at Tier Two and Tier Three. I'll just speak to a couple of different strategies at Tier Two before venturing to more intensive supports. So one of the strategies that we employ at Tier Two is check-in, check-out. And really, what this does is take a look at how students are following behavioral expectations across various settings. The power in this data is we're able to drill down and see is a student being effective in Class A versus Class B? Is there a time of day where a student is meeting with a ton of success? Is there a day of week when they're really, really struggling? More than anything, a system like check-in, check-out really fosters relationship. Oftentimes, when we're employing a Tier Two strategy, we notice that these are students that would benefit from a trusted adult within the building, and it's not always there. So this is ensuring that students have a rock within the building. If we take a step back, I do also want to emphasize the importance of Triple ST. This is a place where New Haven has been very effective at looking at the whole child through the six developmental pathways for a long time, convening meetings that have varied expertise with a variety of different data sets just to ensure that we're matching supports with student need. Ultimately, we do occasionally find ourselves in more intensive intervention. So at Tier Two and Tier Three, these are also places where we're leveraging our support staff within our buildings, be that school social workers, counselors, et cetera. So this might be the facilitation of an explicit social skills group. This might be individual or group counseling. And at this point, we might also put families in touch with additional outside resources. Once we venture up the triangle to the pinnacle, Tier Three, we're really looking at intensive and individualized supports. More often than not, this comes in the form of a functional behavior assessment or an FBA. Really, what we're looking at here are targeted behaviors. How frequently are they occurring? How long are they occurring for? We gather background information from families, from the educators within the building. And really, the goal there is to ascertain what the function of the behavior is. Are we trying to gain a tangible object? Are we seeking attention? Are we trying to escape work? And oftentimes, this comes right alongside a behavior intervention plan where we can put in place more intensive interventions to try to really kind of modify the student environment and curb future misbehaviors. This is certainly a place where we're leveraging outside resources as well. It might also be employing individuals like our behavioral specialists that are working in some of our buildings. And really, what they're able to do is to put in place different interventions, track the duration, track the frequency, and ultimately monitor whether or not those interventions are meeting with success. I guess the last thing that I would say is all the supports that we're putting in place, be those universal, targeted, or intensive, they're typically only as effective as the professional development and training that we employ alongside them. So I'll invite Monica back up just to talk a little bit about what that looks like.
Thank you, Bill. And as Bill said, our capacity building and our professional development is a multifaceted approach. We look to ensure that we're training all New Haven public school staff in the topics of social-emotional behavioral supports. So we do that, you know, from a district level. We offer the topics such as mental health first aid, supporting students with complex needs, de-escalating strategies. We offer those to all staff across the district in what we call academies. Then we also offer district-wide approach professional development designed specifically by the data based on what the school's needs are. And we do that through whole school during staff meetings. But we also offer, as Bill said, we go into Triple ST team meetings. We support them with developing and identifying new strategies. We also go into grade-level meetings if they're particular grade levels that are needing a little bit more support in behavior management or strategies to support the needs of students. And then finally, the last type is more individualized. We even do one-to-one coaching where we go in and observe and build a relationship with the teacher to see what the needs are. What are they doing well? Where are they falling down? And what can we do to better support them with finding more strategies to support their students? So it's multifaceted. And I just want to say one thing about on this particular PowerPoint where it says calendar, you can go in and click that on your own at another time to see the catalog of what we offer. It's not exhaustive, but it's a start of the topics that we do have that are already scheduled for this year. And that's growing and ongoing. And with that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Haka to come in and talk a little bit about what this all looks like within her school building, Truman School.
Good evening, board. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to just let you know what's happening at Truman School. Truman School is a pre-KA school, it's a bilingual school. And this is my third year as principal of Truman. A lot of what Monica and Bill already spoke of is what's happening at Truman. We are aligned with the district initiative. But at Truman, I... Oh, that's your slide? When I was asked what the student engagement looks like at Truman, it starts with our families. It starts with our community. We have done a lot of work to build in trust. If our families do not believe that we have their best interests of their children in mind, then it's a lot more difficult to engage these families, to support us, and to have our children really believe that they are part of this community and own their learning and create this safe and positive culture we are seeking to create. So it starts with my assistant principal and I and my security guard at the doors in the mornings, in the afternoons welcoming parents in Spanish and English in Pashto. And in the evenings, just in the afternoon, making sure everybody gets on that bus safely and that we are communicating with families at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day. We are ensuring that we are connecting families with the services that we have at the school, the clinic, Clifford Beards. We have a community closet. We have a pantry. We make sure that none of those things are an obstacle for children to show up at school. And ultimately, what we want is when students and families walk into our building, that they are met with a sense of belonging. The second piece is building and maintaining that positive culture and climate. And as Bill mentioned, it starts with those Tier One supports. And for us, it's the PBIS, Positive Behavior. We have incentives for our children. They get tickets, tiger tickets, like money for doing the right thing. And then they can cash out those tickets for rewards or little treats. And we also have town hall meetings and Student of the Month celebrations. Just a lot of activities throughout the year to engage families and to make our children feel the pride of celebrate their successes. We also have tons of clubs, after-school programs and clubs. But something that we've done is create a club called FLECK, or Future Leader Educators Club. And these are eighth graders, seventh and eighth-grade students, pairing with lower-grade students, a lot of them special education students, and they serve as mentors. Again, strengthening the sense of belonging. And you are the role models of the school. We leverage especially the ones that are a little more spicy, like, okay, you are going to be part of this club and you're going to teach our little ones how to do the right thing. And they have taken ownership of that. And we don't forget our staff. We care about our staff. We do a lot of celebrations for our staff through our School Culture and Climate Committee. We do staff versus student games. We do like hard cards. We do tons of little activities and incentives for staff members also to feel that they are part of this, that work matters and that they are recognized. So again, it's all about recognition, relationship, and this shared responsibility that we have at Truman. And the third piece is, as Monica and Bill mentioned, the multi-tier systems of support. We are not perfect. There are issues. They do arise. But what we try to do at Truman is how can our children learn from their actions? How can they repair the harm? So we do have tons of restorative conversations. So children are speaking to each other. Yes, they may get into conflict, but I can stand here and say that none of the children that have had conflict, that conflict has not continued because of the measures in place for them to repair that harm, to have those conversations, and because of our strong relationship with the families and the support we receive from them. This is what student engagement looks like at Truman. There's still work to be done, but I think we are headed in the right direction. And with the support of this team, it has been very, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And what better way to end the conversation about culture and climate than hearing from our students? So I'll invite Lele up to speak to us about her experience as a student leader around culture and climate in SEL.
Hello, I'm Lele. I'm a senior at Metropolitan Business Academy, and I've been a student in the New Haven District since kindergarten. I'm here to share my experience as an SEL student leader. This was an eye-opening experience that allowed me to connect with my peers on mental health and SEL. It allowed me to become more in tune with my emotions and my mental health. I had the opportunity to go to middle schools. I also got to assist students and their families in activities surrounding SEL during family nights. I also co-facilitated the first-ever SEL symposium, which allowed me to connect with students from other schools. Through this experience, I was able to recruit students from my school in order to continue to uplift others. I am beyond excited to lead my own group of students within my school community to spread awareness on mental health and the importance of SEL. With that, we plan to continue mentoring middle school students and to co-facilitate this year's SEL symposium, where we plan to invite more students to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Boarding with that, we will open it up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you. Dr. Benitez, then Dr. Joyner?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Yes, in my view, I am frozen, but I can hear you well. First of all, it warms my heart that we are still using Triple ST as the team to work on this very important multi-tier system of support. Something that I want to take credit was born at the All Columbus Now's fame. We had one more initiative, and we said, wait a second. We already look at kids. If we're going to look at kids with the... You know, in regards to the multi-tier, we have a team. It's strong. It can do it. Triple ST is ready to take that on. And I am so happy to hear that we continue to take into consideration the developmental pathways and that the teams are strong and doing this work in school. So thank you very much for sharing that. I'm also excited to see that there are schools that are really working hard on restorative practices. Congratulations to Truman, and I'm sure there are others. And thank you very much for that. I believe that if students are aware of their responsibility in maintaining and in keeping a safe school environment... aware of their responsibility in maintaining and in keeping a safe school environment and their parents support that too, we can have very successful schools where kids come to school to learn and not to battle other kids. So thank you very much. I do have a question. I, I saw that with the calendar thing, there are many things. So do schools, is that like a menu where schools select what they need?
Thank you. That particular catalog is the ones that are offered to the whole district. So the first ones are schools that are already signed up for state training around multi-tiered PBIS specifically. And then the other additional ones are topics that we offer all throughout the district. And that's by signing up or registering. But those are taught topics that we can also schedule based on need to individual schools if they like some of those topics are available.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Dr. Joyner?
First of all, let me thank you for a great presentation at Teaching and Learning and follow-up presentation to the entire board. What I like to do is offer my commentary on feedback to the presentation at Teaching and Learning and to try to take us a little higher when it comes to this notion of, of working to create culture and climate. A bit of history, the whole notion of school climate or social climate came out of anthropology and sociology. And, and it dealt with comparativeness of societies across the world and how those societies flourished or did not flourish on the basis of their norms. And it was what, what, what the people as, as a rule thought was normal, normal behavior and values, the things they valued. Do they value people? Do they value things? Do they value peace? Do they value war? And of course, across human history, we've seen societies exhibit a range of norms and values, and we've also seen a result of that. If you look at what's going on in the world now, there are certainly a lot of cultures that are led by people who value war and pestilence and all those negative biblical things that, that we've read about over time, not just biblical, but in other sacred texts. So when Dr. Cromer started the program in nineteen, in the 1960s as a psychiatrist, he understand, understood one fundamental fact, that the quality of relationships in a, in an environment largely determine how effective those people can be. And the biggest part of that was the norms and values that adults modeled in front of children. And being an imperfect human being, I have been ashamed of some of the things I've modeled in public. But being reflective, you go back and try to do better the next time. If you think about what we said in the meeting, Socrates said that the unexamined life is not worth living. So that means that as adults in the environment, we have to be reflective practitioners. But we also have to agree on norms that build healthy organizations. And I'm just going to go through them real quick, and I'm going to ask the superintendent to think about what we're trying to do systemically, not just what we do in individual schools, but what we do from the board on down and from the classroom all the way up, at least in those areas that we can control. So there are about seven universal norms that build healthy societies. And you'll recognize a, a great deal of what Dr. Cromer and others in his organization brought forward to try to help schools across the world, really, because we worked in schools in Ireland, France, England, South Africa, Trinidad and Tobago, Mexico, Puerto Rico, and 29 states in the United States. The first norm was human dignity and basic respect. If the board doesn't model that, then we're on a downhill course from the jump. And I think if you just read newspaper articles and you look at YouTube videos, that this board has not always modeled that. And, and of course, you can watch any kind of deliberation in Congress and see that. And, and almost every branch of government, they're not modeling this human dignity and basic respect. And that's really the golden rule, what you would want for yourself, you, you should give to others. Truth and shared reality, that, that there is something called the truth. And if we don't all share in that understanding, then we have a problem. And that's the purpose of school planning and management teams, Triple STs, parent programs, to try to agree on what the truth is regarding people, places, and things in the environment, and then operate out of that. The next one is nonviolence and self-restraint. I've always struggled with nonviolence because of my childhood and because of some of the things I had to do to protect myself and my, my siblings. But I'll, I'll recognize that violence is wrong, except for in self-defense. And not only physical violence, but character assassination and verbal violence, the things you say to children, the non, nonverbal behavior that you exhibit in front of them that basically says to them they're either great or not so great. Fairness and equal rule of law. It shouldn't matter that somebody's child is a child of a board member or a president or a governor, that everybody's child deserves the same standard of justice. Responsibility and contribution. Every time somebody in this system advocates their responsibility, it creates another burden for the rest of us. Anytime you don't fix a stair tread in time, anytime you don't fix a leaking faucet, anytime you don't fix a toilet, it has a ripple effect on the whole system. So responsibility and contribution is critically important. Everybody has to contribute from where they are in the system, including kids and parents. Reciprocity, trustworthiness, and civic cooperation. If I'm kind to you, can you at least be kind to me? Can we work together to build truths based on the foundation of trust? And accept our own issues, our own behavior as either a part of the solution or part of the problem? Can we do that? And then, of course, care and stewardship for the vulnerable and the common good. We educate one of the most vulnerable populations in this country. Children that come from refugee status, children that come from a family history of slavery and colonization, children that come from a, a family of sexual abuse and verbal abuse. And when they come out of those places, are they coming into a place of peace and caring? Or are they coming into a space that's duplication of what they just left at home? We can't control a great deal of what happens in somebody's household, but we can't control how we receive kids and what we do with them. So what I'm asking the superintendent and the district to do is make these values institutional and universal across the district. And certainly, restorative justice is very, very important. And I told the group that the presentation was mostly about what we do for kids. But the larger issue is who we are, what we are becoming, and whether or not we are brave enough to confront our own issues so that we can better serve children. And I'll end on a statement about human dignity and basic respect. No matter what a person does in this district, whether you're angry with them because they didn't come to a meeting on time or didn't do lesson plans on time, the way to change that is the one to help them understand they're better than that, that we're here to help you. But in some cases, you can help people out, in other cases, you have to help them out. Because you cannot allow one or two people to contaminate and undercut what we're trying to do in building the beloved community. It's not fair to the person. It's not fair to you. Because if you guys come to school every day geared up, excited, that you're going to extend as much kind energy as you possibly can, and you have a contrarian in your midst. If you have a person that does not believe in your children, that don't believe in you, that don't believe that, that they deserve what you've given them, then that's not helpful. And maybe that person should work someplace else. And if we don't hold truth to that, we're faking the funk. And we don't want to fake the funk. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Mr. Juarez?
Thank you for this presentation. I appreciate being updated on, on where we are with our efforts to improve school climate. I would love to know, I want to be much less philosophical than, than Dr. Joyner, but just, just on a very practical level. You know, I especially appreciated the, you mentioning, you know, the various opportunities for training and for professional development that you, that you make available to the teaching staff at, at the, at the schools. My question is, what do you need that you don't currently have to be more successful? And, and perhaps, you know, that'd be sort of for you at the district level. I'd also love to know, you know, Principal Haka mentioned, you know, that we have a long way to go. How can, how can we as the board, how can the district, how can we better support your efforts?
Very great question. We always talk about the magic wand, and I remember during COVID times that that was a big question. And this work really became highlighted during those times and the importance of social connections. I think that's a collective response that we will work to get you a response of what else we need in regards to supporting our students, because there is need. But I would like to talk to everyone and get you a solid report on the things that really would benefit us. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just add, thank you for the work that you're doing in this area. I think it's very, very important and so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, um, yes, thank you for this, another excellent presentation. We seem to be having a run of great presentations. So thank you for that. And do also appreciate always when we're bringing student voice in as well as building leaders and other staff involved in the work at various levels. Just really always appreciate that. I think one, one thing that I think probably would be very helpful is outlined in our staffing guidelines report. So as I'm listening to the presentation, I'm also thinking about all the dozens of positions that would support this work if we had equitable funding in Connecticut so that we would be able to afford to pay people to do those positions. And it does make me think that maybe one refinement to our staffing guidelines report, when we do it again in probably March 2026, is to maybe model out, like maybe see just what if we were able to fully staff based on those guidelines, what would it look like in Truman School in terms of more support in that building? It might mean another five, six, 10 people to support this work as well as, you know, the educational program, which is obviously why that, that this work is in supportive. And so, so I do just think about that, that there might be something we need to be thinking about is how we can just maybe make it even more personalized. If this is what we mean in this building to further this work. So, but thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yeah, one more.
Yeah, I have a question. Dr. Joyner, you want to go, and then I'll go?
Yeah, I, I was glad to hear Mr. Juarez make the point. The answer to that is, is a training model that was developed at the Child Study Center, where you train board members, superintendents, central office staff. You train everybody in the skills and content mastery associated with the program, and you coach them. You attended SPMT meetings, Triple ST meetings, parent meetings. And we also developed an instrument to measure fidelity. So the practical side of that is, is that material. Unfortunately, in education reform, we forget about stuff that was done 20 years ago. That's the foundation for stuff we're trying to do now. And we pretend that there is something new under the sun, and there really is nothing new under the sun. So if you go back to that training model, there's plenty of literature. There was a national evaluation. You'll see what happened when they trained everybody in the model and, and created a kind of success that, that we enjoyed during those, those years.
Thank you. Also, a question came up lately, actually, as you were talking. If you wanted to come up or afterwards, I would love to hear the answer to, like, what surprised you? Like, I think you said that that you held the first-ever SEL symposium, and you're going to do it again. Anything surprised you through that process, either about yourself or about the symposium or your peers?
I had never done anything like that before, so it was really surprising. How many people actually got together to actually run this symposium? Because it was, it took a lot of planning. We each had a, there were multiple different sections. Each of them had different activities. So we all had to collaborate and work together to do, to do something that was able to explain to others what we do as a community.
Yeah, and thank you. And not having done this before, what made you agree the first time to do this, put it together?
My whole goal is to help people and educate people on topics that are not really talked about. I don't think before I started this that I knew much about SEL. So I just wanted to give people the experience I had.
Yeah, wow, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Negron, and thank you, Ms. Jackson, also for making your way here from your other meeting. Thank you. Dr. Negron, is there other items?
No, that concludes my update for tonight.
Great, thank you. And just for the president's report, I will work with the board to schedule some of our training sessions, just to circle back to that at a time that would be convenient for us. Next is Teaching and Learning and Facilities Naming Committee Report. Dr. Joyner?
I've actually had my say on most of, of what we're doing tonight. So the report is really the report that you just received. What we do in Teaching and Learning, superintendent brings forth an issue like this. We work on it in the committee, and then we identify people to report it. And thank you, people from Bridgeport, thank you for coming. So I just think we have to keep building on that. And we have to keep building on this notion that culture and climate is not just something that happens in a school, in a classroom. Culture and the climate is a reflection of our entire system and the adult behavior, parents, students, and, and the system. So Dr. Negron and I have been talking about that on regular, and we will continue to talk about it. And I'm hoping that we can follow the admonition that we should try to train everybody. And we should try to create instruments to evaluate level of use and level of effectiveness. It's already been done, and so you don't have to reinvent it. And with AI, you can, you can, you can develop a, a training institute probably in a six hours, but you have to know what you're doing. You have to know the content. You have to know the literature. You have to know who the key players are in particular fields and do that. And I'm so glad Mr. Juarez is on the board because he has such a pragmatic orientation that, that we, that we need. And I also think that the board is in a position, the model of behavior that we expect of everybody based on how we treat each other and how we treat staff and how we treat parents and what we will allow and not allow in our meeting message. So that, that concludes my report. As far as naming, there are some wonderful names in the hopper. I have to do a little bit more to do bio sketches. Jill Tarazi, who was probably the first and greatest superintendent in the history of our school system. John Dow. And then, of course, at the school level, people like Michael Mongiello, who created the Volk Ed Department at Hill House, and he's still alive and well. We are naming the floor of the Floyd Little Athletics Center after Robert LaMell and Sal Verteram, two men that I have tremendous respect for. They'll be here on the 18th at the basketball game. We're going to have a luncheon for them and their families. They're coming from as far away as Australia. And actually, naming stuff after righteous people is probably one of the best things we can do as a city. Just, just for history, Mount Rushmore was done without any input from the public. People had the power to put those people up there, and that's what they did. And we're not going to do that. So that concludes my report on, on naming. And I will definitely have names specifically with bio sketches. And I will definitely have names specifically with bio sketches before the end of the year, maybe in our first or last meeting in December. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wilcox, Head Start Report, Citywide School Building Committee Report and Finance and Operations Report, please.
All right, thank you. I'll be as brief as I can. First with Head Start. The draft minutes are posted on the website. Just one or two things I'll mention. We are at 99% capacity. There's only six slots available. So things are going well as far as that goes. Other things that are happening is the various parent meetings are happening and they're having great parent involvement, which I think is a good thing. Some of the effects of the government, federal government shutdown, parts of Head Start, federal side was kind of shut down. So, but now they're having access to things like the fiscal specialists and others that the Head Start local relies on. And the, for Citywide School Building Committee Report, we did meet. And one thing I did check today, we were missing the stewardship report isn't posted on the website. So just request that that gets posted because I do think that's highly informative about the various things that are happening related to facilities. So there was a good meeting with that. And then finally with Finance and Operations Committee, in addition to the action items which you already have voted on tonight. We did have a information presented on the next budget cycle and some budget mitigation efforts. Our CFO, Mr. Hernandez, sharing presentations. So it's like insight into the budgeting process that's happening in the district this year. Also a draft of a schedule, a calendar of some things that are going to be happening in terms of greater number of public forums. I think it was mentioned five. In the past, I think there's been two, but five and then having them in different parts of the city. So it was good discussion related to that. And then the final thing I'll mention was we did have a great presentation from a group called Green Bank. Clean Transportation for Green Bank, talking about proposals for fundings for school bus electrification. And so I think we're going to be hearing more about that. So having some pathways to get us on to even quicker a path to have electric buses in the district. So I think we're going to be hearing more about that maybe after the first of the year. So.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Yes, I know, thank you for, for the budget information. I just want to make sure I am reading this document correctly. I, I read here that in salaries for teachers, we have $81,428,641. Is that correct?
I'm assuming that's correct. I don't have it in front of me and you do.
Okay, I'm sorry. What I see, I, I just, I thought it'd be a great service to the public if at least when we meet and, and you give your report, you could review different parts of the budget and kind of explain a little bit of it. It could be done by the CFO. And I'm not talking about the whole thing, but maybe little chunks at every meeting. And that way, by the time we actually are doing the full presentation, people are more familiarized with the, with what each section looks like. For example, I'm looking at, at the general fund report and it says that we spent about $123 million in total salaries. Out of that, $81 million are for teachers, $18 million are for administration and management. That was interesting for me because we usually hear we have too much administration and management. And then paraprofessionals are only $3 million. Support staff, $11 million. Part-time, $2 million. So I'm just saying, this, this is great. It was good for me. I've seen this 100 times. But then I was thinking, you know what? These are things that we should at least do in chunks so that people, so that is highlighted and people start knowing more about where do we spend the money and where do we need the money? Because obviously we need the money to pay these people and they, their salaries go up every year. So this is just a snapshot. And, and I'm just, just, just asking if that could be something that you will consider for when you do your reports on FNO?
I 100% agree and will add it to our agenda at our next FNO meeting to talk about what that might look forward, look at moving forward. And I do think we're also getting some good information from our new CFO. I know one of the things that we had talked about in a previous meeting was also looking at it across all the different funding, major funding streams. So not only general funds, but also the grant funds and so on. And that's also something that I think is a new way of looking at it that also would be helpful for us to highlight. So we'll, we'll take that excellent idea up at our next meeting.
Thank you. Dr. Joyner?
Mr. Chair, what I'm asking for as a final document is a document that has every single item, service, commodity, whatever, that, that we spend money on. If it's, if it's Tic Tacs, I want to know how much money we spend on Tic Tacs. I think if we give the public that, and that, that was one thing that all is asked for, that I'm in total agreement with, that you have an itemized budget that accounts for every penny appropriated to the district. And that you have a budget narrative attached to that that defines what that money's spent for. And when we, when we actually got federal money in my previous job and money for philanthropies, we had to do that. And then we had to give them interim reports to make sure that the budget was, was the best that we could, we could come up with, that it dealt with the priorities of the system and that we were spending it as intended. And of course, when I worked, worked with the Community Action Agency back in the 60s, I was very young then. We actually had a 10% reallocation with justification. So let's say you're in the middle of the year and you decide that you can spend more, you should spend more money over here rather than over there. You could reallocate up to 10% of the total budget. And you can make that a number, any number. You could, it could be 5%, but you have to justify it. And that's because that was a contingency that if certain things happen, you might have to spend money here. I also think that we should let the public know that we're doing things that the public thinks that we're using the budget for, but it's because of charitable contributions. For instance, Dr. Nagron had a wonderful back-to-school event and it was presented in the paper as if we took that out of our budget. She got donors to do that. And oftentimes, the headline is more prominent than the rebuttal. And we, we have to stop doing that. We have to, we have to defend ourselves. And we have a right to defend ourselves. So I'm asking that the final document have every penny, that it has a narrative explanation for the budget category and is something that we can distribute without shame to the entire community. But I also think that we should institute the Wilcox Doctrine, that we should also put, create a budget that says how much, actually, it's the Wilcox Suarez Doctrine now, that we should have a, a budget that says how much we could do if we had our fair allocation of funding. And, and I think we ought to do that because it, it really is a movement. It's not just school reform. It, it is a continuation of the struggle to try to give everybody a fair shot. And I'm hoping we can do that. And I, and we can. It's a lot easier to do now than it's ever been.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Points taken. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, I agree. And I'll just let you know that that matches what we've been discussing in finance and operations and, and as the presentations we've had from our CFO and the superintendent is along these lines as well, having probably the most transparent budget process that New Haven Schools maybe has ever had, at least in recent memory. So I think we're all on the same page with that.
It's also the Downer Doctrine because, because Andrea Downer, who graduated from this school, is a person that really started yelling and screaming righteously about that kind of transparency. So we have three new board members, with two new board members that have had a profound effect on how we do business. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcox, that's all?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez, Governance Report, please?
Yes, good, yes. Good evening, Board of Education members and the public. Governance has not met yet this month. We will have our meeting on Wednesday, the 26th, and I shall report when we reconvene. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you. The Food Service Task Group Report. Couple of items. The, the group met and the district food service team is making progress and continues to collaborate inside of our district. As it relates to the food gap distribution, two things to share. One is there was a recent distribution where 450 bags of groceries were prepared and given away. People lined up starting at 2:00 PM and less than an hour later, everything was, was gone. So we appreciate the opportunity to partner with families to distribute food. The next planned distribution is for December 23rd. I believe the time is 1:00 to 4:30 PM for New Haven's student families. And it'll take place inside the school, inside of John Martinez, Lincoln Basset and, and other schools, which will help for the experience given that it will be the month of December. And this will be a little different with this distribution in that people can select what they would like to take. And I, I inquired about that because it might be easier just to put bags together and help families carry them out to their cars or where they're walking. But this group said that allowing families to take food that they would like allows the distribution team to be more responsive to cultural groups and to provide more ethnic choices where people can select the items that they most value and other families can select the items that they most value. One of the things that I'm proud about with the Food Service Task Group is that it continues to innovate and just be thoughtful around the partnerships and the service, services that are provided. And the, the district teams, the collaborators continue to hold families with respect and high regard. So I appreciate that adjustment. Any discussion? Dr. Benitez, Mayor Ellicker?
First of all, thank you for the work that the group is doing. And I am so impressed with, with the choice because that is what we are, a district of choice. So I like that. And, and what a way to do research without telling things because then they will know what's left and, and they will know those are things that we may redirect to other groups of people. But I have a question and, and I'm not sure if this is the right moment or whatever, but I just want to put this in your radar. I believe I've done that before, but not sure if I formerly, formally did that. The students want to do something with a shared table policy. And I believe your task group could be very helpful in shaping that. I do know that the food service staff has been engaged now and students have been working in this. But I would like for us to be very mindful about this initiative or this policy that can become a really good initiative that will support children and families in, in a very strong way. However, we always have to be mindful of how we take care of food. Let me put it that way without saying much. But at least I want to make sure that if you have not seen that draft of a policy, I would share that with you. And I would like for us to make sure that students work with you in that matter before it comes to governance.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Thank you for bringing that forward. Mr. Young is Director of the Program. The district has piloted food shared tables. And I think the policy is an opportunity to make it district-wide. And I know Mr. Young has worked with Mr. Ailey to be a part of the conversation. And I will also review, re-review the policy and get you something that is solid and also reflects the best practices and the legal practices around food safety. Thank you very much. Mayor Ellicker?
Two quick things. I, I visited the food distribution that happened on Friday. I saw Mr. Wilcox there as well and just really inspired by the work that so many families benefited from. A comment from the family that donated the funds to help support it was that New Haven responded immediately when they reached out to say, hey, we want to do this. And they reached out to other districts and did not get that kind of response. The second thing is, I think this is appropriate time to highlight that during SNAP, or the issues with SNAP, when the Trump administration was not releasing emergency funds for SNAP, New Haven Public Schools and the city really stepped up and had two large food distribution events, one at Lincoln Basset, one at John Martinez School. I want to thank Dr. Nagron. Dr. White was heavily involved with that. Baron Young, Danny Diaz, Dr. Joseph Lumpkin as well, as a number of city staff. And there was a fast response and it was everything from working on logistics to Dr. White, Dr. Nagron and I being on the assembly line, putting the packages together and everything. So I really appreciate your work stepping up for our community.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ellicker. And kudos to the district and the partners for making food happen in our district. Seeing no further discussion, I move that we enter executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206B and 1-210B, 9 and 10 regarding records, reports and statements of strategy and negotiations with respect to collective bargaining, New Haven Federation of Teachers Local 933 and School Administrators Association of New Haven, Inc.
Second.
Thank you for discussion, any discussion? And also who should we invite into that conversation?
Definitely Attorney Sierra Milan. She should be able to join us via Zoom.
Great, thank you. Let's vote.
And I'm sorry, Attorney Alexiades, who's here in person?
Great, thank you. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. We're now in executive session. Thank you. A link has been sent out by email and we'll start the Zoom.
What is this?
Dr. B, you're not muted.
I just muted my s-
Thank you. We have the board has returned from executive session. No votes were taken. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Join is not here. Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
And I'm a guest as well. Good evening. Thank you everybody.